Okay, thank you Julie. It's now 7:31 and I welcome our virtual Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order. And before we proceed with the roll call, I just wanted to say for the record that we're operating virtually under Governor Pritzker's executive orders relating to COVID-19. And our agenda has been posted on the Downers Grove Public Library website with instructions on how members of the public can view the meeting, listen to the meeting, and submit comments. Okay Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call please?
Yes. Trustee Doherty.
Here.
Trustee Gagani. Trustee Humphries.
Here, virtually.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton.
Here.
President Graber.
Here, thank you very much Caitlin. We're now on to agenda item number three, welcome to visitors. Would like to welcome the visitors, thank you very much for your interest in the library. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of minutes from February 26, 2020. Any comments regarding the minutes from February 26, 2020? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from February 26?
I'll move to approve the minutes. I'll second. Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve the minutes from February 26. Chris, I believe you were not at that meeting, so let's just proceed with the roll call to approve the February 26 minutes, please.
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Swatna is muted.
Yeah.
Swatna, can you unmute? Can you hear?
There.
Trustee Gagani said yes. Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. The minutes have been approved.
Yes.
We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, do you want to just give us, and I think if we, you can give your report generally, but then I think just in the way that the agenda was set up, we should break up the motions into approving what we would have approved in March and then approving what we would have otherwise approved this evening.
Yes. So for the financials, you have both February and March financials. I'm not sure who we're getting feedback from, so we might need to have people mute.
I'll go unmute too.
Okay. All right. So for the financials, you have both February and March financials. The, on the March financials, you will notice that there is, in the charges for services line, there is $25,000 in, over $25,000 in revenues in the month of March. I just wanted to point that out because that is the com-ed rebate that we've been waiting for, the final one, from the HVAC project. So we have gotten the final, that final payment from them, so that's fantastic. You will see that the March invoices are still at $200,000, but that is due primarily to the February approval of the purchase of new self-check units. Those actually arrived on March 12th, just before we closed to the public, so that was almost $60,000 right there. And then we also had signed for a new software for our public relations department with Orange Boy, and that also includes the payment to our diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant. We were supposed to be in the midst of that in the end of March, and as you all know, that was canceled. So we are in the start of the year, and generally in the first quarter to first half of the year, we have a lot of our annual invoices that are paid, so our overall spending is a little bit skewed due to those annual invoices. That's things like our insurances, the databases that we pay for all at once at the beginning of the year, those sorts of expenses. But you will notice that the April invoices are less than half of what was spent in March, and that's even with the curtailed spending toward the end of March. So if anyone has any questions, we have all sorts of invoices of notes and information in the packet. The packet, again, I think we do have one member of the public today with us that is Did I do that too soon? The board packet is available on the library's website if anybody, we do have one member of the public, I believe, here. So, any questions?
Do we have any questions from the board regarding the first item, which is the February 2020 financial report and March 2020 invoices? And if we don't, then do we have a motion to approve the February 2020 financial report and March 2020 invoices as presented?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the February 2020 financial report and March 2020 invoices as presented.
And that includes the payrolls for February.
Caitlin, can you please proceed with the roll call?
Yes. Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The February 2020 financial report and March 2020 invoices have been approved. Let's move now to the March 2020 financial report and the April 2020 invoices. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding the information presented there? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the March 2020 financial report and April 2020 invoices?
I will move to approve the March 2020 invoices.
I will second Swatna's motion.
We have a motion to approve the March 2020 financial report and April 2020 invoices that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you please proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The March 2020 financial report and April 2020 invoices has been, they have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number six, which is public comment on agenda items. Julie, or I don't know if there's anyone with the staff who has, did we receive any public comment?
Hi, I've been monitoring the emails, so we have not received any feedback or any comments via email, so up until this point.
Okay, thank you Jen. We're now on to agenda item number seven, public comment on other library business. And I will assume that Jen's prior answer is that we've received no public comment on library business or agenda items. So I will move now to agenda item number eight, A, which is the, it's new business, COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan. Julie, do you want to fill us in on the details of the plan?
Well, the details of the plan are that, the plan is very fluid. We do have, it's all going to depend on what happens when the governor allows the state to open and what the executive orders are at the time, as well as what are the recommendations of the CDC, the World Health Organization, and these other groups that we are looking to give us best practices and what libraries should be doing. One thing I will share with you now is that the Institute for Museum and Library Services, which is the federal agency that controls grants, et cetera, for libraries, has just, has undergone, they put in a contract with a national laboratory to do some research on actually circulating library materials and what the best practices are for handling the COVID-19 virus specifically on library materials and the way library materials circulate and are handled. This is something, there's been some guidance with the CDC and the general research that's been done, but library materials are very different from the way that you just go shopping and you bring something into your house. You don't bring that thing back to the store and then bring, and somebody else takes it and then you go back to the store and get it again and bring it back to your house. So library materials, they also are a variety of media. We have papers and cardboard are a less hospitable surface for the virus than plastics. Well, most of our books are still covered in plastic on the outside of the paper. So they are doing some good research and they are in contact with the American Library Association, et cetera, about what best practices might be and helping to make some, give some good advice on how we can open, reopen libraries throughout the United States safely. That being said, the statewide delivery system that is the backbone of resource sharing in Illinois, it's the way that we get things between our libraries. The Reaching Across Illinois Library System has said that they will not reopen delivery until they receive the recommendations from this study. So they are not looking to get started on that again, and that will have a huge impact on the services that we are able to provide, how we move books around, and even getting our materials back from other libraries or folks from other libraries who have Downers Grove materials. So all of this will play in. Our plan to reopen is a phased plan. It's going to go a little piece at a time. The first piece will be getting staff into the building and opening the book drops and starting to take materials back in. Then being open to the public, we do anticipate doing curbside service first. We want to be able to do that safely. Staff will need masks and gloves and other personal protective equipment, so being able to secure, to have those supplies on hand will also be key to being able to open to the public again. And then once we are able to, with the orders, et cetera, we would go to a limited public service model with limited hours. What exactly that looks like will be dependent on what the guidance is from our governor and our state and CDC, et cetera. We may not have any public seating available. We may be limited in the computers that are available to the public. We will definitely be limited on group sizes. And then the next phase would be going to regular hours and maybe having some seating on the floor and appropriately socially-distanced computer, computers for the public. Then next phase would be, large groups would be the only things limited. And then the final phase would be back to a new normal. So it would kind of just take that one little step at a time toward getting to a new normal. We do anticipate, at the moment, we, given the current state and the current executive order, we are planning to have managers and supervisors in the building on May 1st to begin the process of preparing the building to have people in it. And that will be everything from the little things on the floor to tell people where to line up and how far six feet away is, to preparing the meeting room to be a quarantine area. At the moment, the advice is that all items coming back into the library would be quarantined for 72 hours before being checked back in and re-shelled. The advice that we've gotten so far is that time is the best disinfectant for library materials and that leaving them for 72 hours is the best way to handle bringing items back in. That is the advice today. We don't know if that's going to be the advice tomorrow. I will entertain any questions. At this point, because the situation is so fluid, I am asking for the Board of Trustees to authorize me to make temporary policy changes in accordance with the parameters of this plan, so the limited hours, limiting the, possibly limiting unattended children in the library, possibly limiting attendance at certain times to seniors only, things of that nature, and deciding on what those, the different levels would be as we move through the plan. And of course, that would be in consultation with the Board President as those decisions are made.
Julie, do you, do you have a feeling on, or have you looked at like how the curbside pickup would work if that was, I think that's like maybe phase two, you know, once staff is back in the building and we can start the process, like how would that look?
Our circulation department is actually working on that now. They are looking at a process, as a matter of fact, interestingly enough, at the Public Library Association conference in February that we had a number of staff go to, there was actually a wonderful program on curbside pickup and curbside pickup procedures that was all pre-COVID-19. So our staff is using that advice and that procedure, that's kind of a best practices, and incorporating the COVID-19 advice to try to make a model for curbside service that will work for us. We are still working on it, what that would actually look like. We do anticipate that public service staff from throughout the library will be helping. It will not be entirely the circulation staff who are providing that service and doing all of the pieces of it, but the circulation department is figuring out the process for us.
Well, and I think one of my staff actually mentioned that in Wisconsin, if they haven't already, they're actually kind of ahead of that and have already started some curbside at some public libraries there, is that?
Yes. The Wisconsin State, statewide stay-at-home order, shelter-in-place, whatever theirs is called, expanded essential services to include curbside pickup at public libraries. They were the first in the country to do it. And so we are looking for information to come from them on best practices. Again, you wait to hear what they have to say.
Dave, you're on mute.
Apologize for that.
There you go.
The question I have is, with curbside pickup, there are two means of contact between the customer and the staff person and the book and the staff person and so forth. It's books and people. For the time being, I think the books have all pretty much been in the library long enough, they're probably pretty safe, and as long as they're in a plastic bag of some sort, I don't think that's an issue. The thing I'm concerned about is the staff member who is closer than six feet to the public and how we're handling that. I mean, I realize that we can wear masks, but is there any way to have an intermediary shelf or pedestal or something where you can put something down and then leave and the person drives up and picks it up? That's just a question. I'm not trying to resolve it at the meeting, but that's the only thing for that phase, phase two, that was concerning me.
One of the concepts that is out there for curbside service in COVID-19 is to have people simply pop their trunk, and instead of handing it to a person, the staff member places the items in the trunk of the car or in the back, kind of a thing.
That's a good solution.
So Dave's question makes me think of issues of equity and access, so community members who don't have access to cars or phones, because the current kind of process relies on both of those things. And I know, yeah, I know, you know, maybe it's serving the greater number of people first, but thinking about the community service aspect of this and how there would be a segment of our community that would not be able to take care, you know, to take advantage of this service.
The whole, even just beginning the curbside service idea, it's kind of predicated on you have to have access to at least a telephone. That's because otherwise you have no way to get in touch with us and tell us what you want. So yes, there is an equity issue there. We do have people who are very good at finding a workaround. I have faith in our circulation department to have an idea of what else they could do if someone doesn't have a car and wants to come pick something up. You know, there is at our, on the parking lot entrance, there is a bench near the entrance. We could, you know, set the time and put the person's bag with their name on it at the, on the bench, kind of a thing.
And I think there will, I think there will be alternatives that develop for that. I'm just thinking about some of the stores that are out there that have programs where you pull up, and if you, they want you to preorder, but if you haven't, someone will go into the store and get something for you, I mean, with proper social distancing and not that that's ideal, but for the few people that maybe don't have a car or easy access to a telephone. But I go back to Dave's point of just even kind of in that process, like maintaining the social distancing, because it's just creating more opportunity for, you know, to kind of breach that.
Yeah, and it will be... Sorry, Kim, I didn't catch that.
Okay. You were talking about securing plastic bags for this too, you can maybe give an update how that is coming along, but I assume that the reusable bags are then not being used for a while?
No. No. No, like the toys and anything else, fabric that we can't wash effectively, if they're clean effectively, those will not be available to the public for some time. We are figuring that this will be a lot of grocery bags.
But here again, when they come back, when they come back, the staff will carry that bag back into the meeting room and take the books out of it and stack them up. And that's another opportunity for exposure.
And actually, that's some of this guidance on what best practices are. Again, time is the best disinfectant. If things come back in a, in a plastic bag, that's likely to get set on the table and left for the 72 hours, staff with gloves on, putting it over there and leaving it until the requisite time has passed to try. We're going to do everything we can to minimize staff exposure, because everyone's health and safety is our highest priority. Staff and public, let, you know, we're going to try to do this to the best of our ability as a contactless exchange, and we're going to handle the materials according to best practices.
Well, I just raised the issue, I don't expect this group of eight or 10 people to make this decision, we don't need to decide that tonight, and I am very comfortable with that the staff is going to analyze this and come up with workable solutions or not, but I think we need to, this, this plan and Julie's recommendation is that we delegate that to her and to the Board President, and I'm very comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it as well, because as Julie was alluding to earlier, this is so fluid that decisions may need to be made on a relatively quick basis as far as what a policy may be, but knowing that that policy will exist for a temporary period of time until we are able to regroup and establish more formal policies long-term. So I'm in favor of this as well. Do we have any other questions on agenda item A, A, which I think at its core is what David, Dave was alluding to in that it's, there's a plan, we have plans in place, but I think more importantly, it's giving Julie the authority and consultation with me, the ability to kind of make modifications as we, if necessary, until we regroup and establish policies as a board.
Yeah, again, I'm very comfortable with that. Some of the later stages, when we start admitting people to the library and allowing them to go to the stacks and, pardon me for saying it, but sneezing on the books, that's where I start getting pretty nervous, but hopefully we will have more guidance and more experience by that time. So I'm, I say we should move ahead and...
So is that a motion, Dave?
I don't have the wording of the motion in front of me.
Motion to approve agenda item A, A, the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan.
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion that has been seconded regarding agenda A.
Can I just say, if we can include the authorization for the library director to make temporary policy changes according to? Can I just say, um, if we can include the authorization for the library director to make temporary policy changes according to the plan?
Okay. Dave, do you, Dave, come off mute and say, Dave, you were on mute.
I include that in my motion.
And I second that motion of being included in the motion, whatever that means.
Okay, okay. So let's, let's on this one, let's proceed with a roll call on Agenda Item 8A.
Can I just make one other comment? I'm assuming that the timing of each of these steps is part of the delegated piece to the, uh, the library director and the board president as well.
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much, Caitlin. Agenda Item 8A has been approved. Um, we're now on to Agenda Item 8B, paying staff according to personnel policy, Section 3.28, emergency closings through May 31st, 2020. Julie, you want to just share your thoughts on this? Agenda item?
Absolutely. Um, I did include a memorandum from a fellow library director, um, in Park Ridge, who shared, um, some interesting information just about, um, cost of the, of unemployment to the library and, and some of the impacts that that would have on services. Rather than reinvent the wheel and rewrite that report, I gave you, um, the one that she had done. But it is important to note that when you're talking about if you have to furlough or lay off staff, that there are costs included in doing that. Um, in order to make sure that we were furloughing only the necessary staff, you know, to protect ourselves from, and to protect the library from any, um, action, uh, from staff, uh, about improperly furloughing or laying folks off. So we would have to bring in a consultant to help us with that. Um, and then the actual payment of unemployment benefits will go, that will not be a cost to our local taxpayers until it goes to the state or federal level because those folks will still be being paid and that cost comes back. You know, the library still has to pay their share of the unemployment for the furloughed employees. And eventually the taxpayers are going to have to pay for the state and/or federal portion of unemployment for those furloughed employees. At this time, we are keeping staff, um, working to the maximum extent possible. Our folks are out there, they're doing great things, they're planning programs. Uh, they are learning the new online summer reading software that we are going to use for the very first time because we're going to go fully online for our summer reading, for summer reading. Um, they are creating the PR that will go along with that. They are still answering reference questions. We're still issuing cards. Just the other day, um, we were contacted by one of our local schools about cards for some students who needed library cards. And we're still doing our card registration. We're making sure that we're, um, available for virtual reference as well. So via chat or email, our staff is still helping to support virtual services on a daily basis as well as doing things like making these plans and figuring out how curbside service will work. Um, one of the things that we put to the circulation staff is to come up with some scripts about social distancing in the library because we're assuming that at some point people are going to come back in the building and they're probably going to have to stay away from each other. So the search department has been talking, has been making scripts for what do you say in the case that we have limited, um, number of people in the library at the time? What would that, you know, what would that feel, sound like if you were the person who had to be standing at the door telling people at this time, the library is only allowing 100 people in the building per, and that's a made up number. Uh, 100 people in the building at a time, uh, we ask that you, uh, appropriately follow social distancing rules. Um, we do have self-checkouts, that sort of thing. So, so what could they say to people in, in those different circumstances? So we're doing our best to keep everybody working. Um, and as a matter of fact, one of the newest things we have going is the mask-making team. Um, because face coverings are recommended, but we know that PPE are still hard to come by and masks, um, are prioritized for healthcare workers. So we have 14 members of our staff who have the talent and the inclination to help make masks. And their, um, their goal is to make 500 masks for library staff by the time we reopen. So we, we're keeping people busy. It may not be the same job that they've been doing along the way, but they're, they're working and they're working to be ready when we can open the doors again.
Right, and I, I, um, in, in addition to, I think, the points that Julie made, the thing, some of the, um, my considerations were the fact that, I mean, you can't, you know, sort of turn off the library and turn it back on. It's something that kind of has to continue. There's always new things coming out, there's new, um, developments, there's new legislation that I know, um, uh, members of the library are studying and helping the public, um, by putting information on the website as far as like applying for SBA loans and the CARES Act and kind of all of the things that are relevant now that weren't relevant two months ago. And so I think that, um, those are important considerations from my perspective. And also I feel like, once we do get to the point where, um, the library is kind of operating at the new normal, the new normal, whatever that happens to be, the, um, I think the, kind of the strain and the need for the library to really step up in the community is going to be, um, you know, a, a really, uh, really great. And so we need to be ready for that situation. And I think by continuing to retain employees does, uh, you know, it helps us, it helps position us to be ready for that particular point in time.
Especially since we don't know when that point in time will be.
Exactly.
For me, this is, I hate to put it this way, but it's a no-brainer because the, the financial part of it has been very, I've heard this discussed in some other areas as well, but the Park Ridge letter kind of lays it out in a format that, that makes a great deal of sense to us. And, uh, but I've, I've heard this discussed in, uh, some other municipal venues, that it actually costs society, if you want to broaden it that widely, more if we lay them off. Um, and it, that doesn't consider what Jonathan was just talking about. The training, the recruitment, the social teamwork structure of our library, which is so good, and the culture of service that we have for many years built and Julie and her staff have done such a good job of extending. I would hate to have to rebuild that. And so I think this is, especially through May, I think we really have to do this. And if necessary, maybe beyond May. Will it cost some money? Yeah. But not as much as it sounds like, and it will cost the culture, the, the society less. Um, yes, there's a possibility that our property tax revenues will be reduced a bit. But we have other areas we might be able to conserve a bit uh, for the time being. I think it would be very short-sighted and foolish of us to this early in the game, at least, consider reducing staff.
The other point I was going to make is that, and this is more of like a, you know, it's, it's kind of the emotional pole, but or the, the logic, but it also is essentially according to the policy that we have in place already. So in addition to all of the reasons we've stated, this is essentially the policy that exists for, um, you know, emergency closings, which I, I would, I, I would find that this sort of fits within that particular category. So any other, any other comments on, I know this is, I mean, this is a topic that I think, you know, I've thought a lot about it, talked to Julie, and I, I am interested in other board members' thoughts on this particular topic because I can see, you know, other opinions on this as well.
I'll real quickly say, I think the Park Ridge's letter was laid out very well. And I, I'm in agreement with what she says. It, it is a short-sighted, quick move to do something in five weeks. And we have another five weeks potentially, and that's what we're talking about right now. And I'm in agreement that that is the best situation for the library currently.
And maybe to just play off of, I think, what Dave said earlier, I've been really impressed by, yeah, the creativity and flexibility and innovation that I've seen reflected in the emails that Julia sent out about what staff are up to and the projects they've been working on and the way they've been, yeah, other duties as assigned, right? Like things that go beyond what, what, what's in their job description. I've been really impressed by that and the work even going into this agenda and the, and the plans that have come out. So I'm absolutely behind this. Um, and I, I, I will move, if, if no one else has anything to add. I will move to approve Agenda Item 8B, paying staff according to personnel policy, Section 3.28, emergency closings through May 31st, 2020.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 8B, paying staff according to personnel policy, Section 3.28, emergency closings through May 31st, 2020, which has been seconded. Caitlin, um, please, please, uh, proceed with the roll call on this.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda Item 8B has been approved. Okay, I think we're on to a, uh, maybe a quicker topic here. Agenda Item 8C, the update to the general policy, Section 2.13, photography and videography. Julie, do you want to let us know what's going on here?
All right. So this would be changing the section name to taking images and recording video in library and during virtual library program. This, um, the additional wording in here was suggested, all these, the things that it covers were suggested by our programming team who are working diligently on developing virtual programs, um, taking into account all of the, um, the possibilities that are allowed by the software and platforms that we would use for virtual programs. Um, that we cannot guarantee anyone's privacy because during a meeting like this, people can be recording, they can be taking screenshots, um, and any of your personal information. So if you put your name on there, your name is, would be, um, in that screenshot. So just making people aware that the library cannot guarantee their privacy, um, during those types of programs.
Yeah, I'm supportive of, of this. I think it's just more of a technical update given kind of new technology. So unless there are any comments, does that mean one, would anyone like to make the motion?
I actually had a question.
Okay.
I actually had a quick question. Um, and I don't know what the program team is working on and for what audience, but I was wondering if, if any of those programs were intended for, um, people under 18, minors? Um, and whether there needs to be special, I mean, I know there's, there's kind of the mention of parent, legal, guardian, caregiver in the, um, policy itself. Um, but I didn't know, I know there's kind of special considerations around online depiction of, of minors. And so I'm wondering if that, if that's even a thing. I mean, if it's not going to be programmed around, then we don't have to worry about it as much. But if there is kind of teen or children's programming being offered in this virtual format, what other considerations we might have to be aware of, especially like legally, because there's some legal, um, issues there, I think.
Um, as far as we have seen, that habit, um, participation in the programs is generally your consent. There is kind of an assumption that they're not participating in a virtual program without parental permission. So I have not seen a, a policy, um, sample that takes that on. Um, but we can, we will continue to look at what is, what is best practice and what is advised to include in a virtual programming policy. And, uh, you may get something back from us, uh, next month that kind of expands that policy yet again.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, I know we're looking at a lot of those things as well and looking for other precedents to be able to include in our own policies. And so if I, if I come across something, I'll, I'll share it because I know that that's something other organizations have dealt with and they might fit.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments regarding Agenda Item 8C? Okay, do we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 8C?
A motion to approve.
Okay.
Oh, I did not, update to general policy, Section 2.13, photography and videography.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Agenda Item 8C, update to general policy, Section 2.13, photography and videography that has been seconded. All in favor, please come off mute. Please say aye, aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, thank you very much. Agenda Item 8C has been approved. We're now on to Agenda Item 8D, fine free through summer reading. Julie, would, would you like to walk us through this one?
Um, so we are currently fine free and the idea, um, of not charging fines through kind of the limited service time, um, is in that, that COVID-19 response and, and phased plan. Um, at this point, everything is being automatically renewed. We are looking at promoting summer reading and, uh, being able to limit cash handling and offer a little bit of relief to any of our families who are struggling financially um, during this time. So this would be kind of that first step. Now, our automatic renewals have already slashed, um, the fine income that we receive anyway. We took that hit back in 2017 when we first started automatic renewal. And so now, to be able to do this, it's a very, it is less than a half of a percent of our total budget. It's probably half of what we just got back from ComEd. Um, to be able to do this for a whole year, much less be able to do it just for summer reading. Um, and our situation has changed slightly. Uh, SWAN, our catalog consortium, um, I had given you some configurations and some talk, some language about configuration within this report. Since that was written, um, more libraries have actually decided to do this. Um, and so SWAN is making a special configuration Um, and so SWAN is making a special configuration just for what they're calling fine free for now. Um, which will, uh, have parameters that are, uh, kind of general for any library that wants to do this for a set amount of time. And so all we're looking for right now is just your permission to go fine free through the end of summer reading, which is August 2nd. Um, and we will make that happen as far as the configurations and such with SWAN. Um, it is our intent to continue the automatic renewal process throughout that. Um, this is just a courtesy to all of those patrons and to minimize our cash handling.
Uh, Jonathan, I had one comment on this one, if I may. I'm all for it. Uh, we've had some informal discussions over the last year or two about possibly doing this permanently. Uh, I think one, uh, unexpected, uh, well, whatever, uh, we have an opportunity to try it and see how it works. And I think, uh, I think we should do that. I personally would like to make it permanent, but I'd love to see the, uh, see it in place for the three months or so and see how it works out for everybody and see if anybody abuses it too badly. The other thing that I think it does is one way that COVID-19 virus is exchanged is in money. And I find many businesses have gone to 100% credit card. So they don't have to handle cash. And I think this will also help protect our staff.
Thank you very much, Julie.
Other businesses prior to, uh, COVID-19 had also went cashless, um, for safety and security reasons. And, um, so something we could always discuss down the road. I also am in agreement with this currently. But you could always talk about, uh, potentially only being able to pay those via credit card. But of course, I understand there's a issue also of different classes that would not have a credit card. But I would move to go fine free through the summer reading in August. And I have one other, I should have asked the question first before the motion. But, um, when you, if we approve this, you re, um, you receive reports from SWAN. Is that something you may share with us? Not disclosing names, but showing us the percentage and things like that.
Yes, we can get reports that tell us, um, what, uh, percentage has been, um, forgiven. Uh, we can also just monitor it. It's its own line. The, the fines and fees are their own line in the budget. So you can just watch it from month to month and see how it actually impacts each of those months. Based because our budget is set according to what we did last year with fines. And so, um,
Right. I agree.
It's easy to monitor. Yep.
I agree on the financial side, but I guess to look at the number of patrons that are now not blocked because of overdue fines, it'd be interesting just, you know, look at what changes we see during it.
Yeah. And I will get, um, I will forward some other information from SWAN. They have done some research with the first libraries going fine free. And really what they've found is it does not affect patron behavior on the timing of return of items. And it also, um, does not affect the percentage that you have that are like lost or never come back.
Right. Now you made me come up with another question that
Sorry.
We're going to talk about how the shelves, the Friday night it closed down at nine o'clock, how empty they were, which was amazing to see I was there. But if items do not come back at all from that, I mean, th- this is the most checkout that you've ever had. And then we're going to go fine free through August. Do you have speculation on items that might not come back?
Well, it, it is just fine free. Things are still billed. So if something, um, gets to bill status, that person still gets blocked. And the, the process continues as usual. They have to, um, pay, bring the item back or pay for it. Um, uh, in order to use the library again after that point. Uh, we don't know what will happen with bringing books back at the moment, but, uh, we're, we're very hopeful that, uh, everything will come back.
Well, I, I just want to echo what Dave, I, I would love to see this conversation continue, you know, or maybe restart, you know, in the fall, if things are normal, normaler. And, you know, have some of that data in hand, have some of those reports. Um, I've seen that same research, Julie, that says that it doesn't change patron behavior to any significant degree. I'd love to take this up again as a board when things, when, when we have more data certainly, and when things are calmed down. So I would like to see that for sure.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a, any additional comments or a motion to approve Agenda Item 8D, fine free through summer reading? Although I think, Kim, you had begun to move, or maybe you did.
I will go back and motion again to go fine free through the summer.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to, um, go find, uh, to approve the fine free through summer reading. Um, that has been seconded. Um, I guess just because this involves dollars, Caitlin, if you wouldn't mind proceeding with the roll call.
Sure. Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We are now fine free through summer, um, which has been approved, Agenda Item 8D. We're now on to Agenda Item number nine, which is the unfinished business. Doesn't look like there is any. Um, and now we're on to Agenda Item number 10, the library director's report. Julie, what's been going on over the past month or so?
Oh, not much.
Oh my goodness, not much. Not, not much at all. So, um, I would like to note, as Tim stated, I, on March 13th, we circulated about twice as many books as we have ever circulated in a single day. Ninety-five hundred items were checked out on that day before we closed. That is an incredible number and the staff who worked that night deserved hazard pay. The, I will say that I came in the following Monday and walked through the lobby new book area and went, wow. Because there was nothing, she was right, there was nothing on the shelf. Yeah, I went upstairs and, uh, the display in front of the ATS desk that usually has, you know, a good 30, 40 books on it had a book on it. It was pretty crazy. Um, so kudos to all the staff who, um, did, who worked that particular night. Uh, they did an amazing job for us. Um, yeah, this, the COVID-19 thing has taken up all of our time. We are working to keep up with all of the recommendations, with what the governor is saying, with what's going on locally. Um, there's all sorts of implications of things like the family's first, uh, coronavirus response act that includes FMLA plus and additional sick time for staff, uh, if they are affected by COVID-19 or have to self-quarantine. So trying to come up with, um, all these different, you know, what, what do we do? What do we do now? Um, and what kind of policies do we need? What kind of, um, information does the staff need? Uh, I do want to say that I did send some information around about a workers' comp ruling for essential personnel that basically says that, um, if you are infected with COVID-19, it is assumed that it was on the job and then the employer has to disprove that. Um, libraries, that actually does not affect public libraries at this time because we are not considered essential. So that is, um, that is specifically in Illinois for first responders and healthcare workers. So, um, even if we were expanded to essential, that workers' comp ruling, uh, would not apply to the library. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Um, we are continuing to get as much as we can in the way of supplies. Um, again, mask making team is out there and, and making cloth masks for the staff. Um, we do have some, um, paper masks, uh, available, um, as well. But we are also, um, making sure that we have soap and hand sanitizer and paper towels and all of those other things that we will need in order to properly disinfect and, uh, what we believe, um, will be the guidelines, uh, as we move forward. So um, working on all of that. Uh, let's see, what else is going on? We do have some other things going on. The masonry and exterior painting project will actually wrap up next week as long as, uh, they can finish painting and it doesn't rain the whole time. So yay, that, that project went really well. Um, and I want to give kudos to Jen, in particular, for our performance evaluations update. Um, Jen has been our, our, uh, project lead on redoing performance evaluations for the entire staff. And it's, it's a great project and we're just, by the end of the week, we will be able to do all of those staff evaluations, which is yet another good thing that can happen during this time, um, that, that we can get that the staff evaluation process done with those new evaluations and have those meetings with staff. So looking forward to that. And then I just wanted to highlight that our, um, diversity, equity and inclusion project is on hold at the moment. Uh, we, we did discuss it at the management team level about restarting that project. We really felt that in-person sessions were very important to us and that we felt that it would foster better, um, dialogue. If the board has a different idea of that, thinks we should move forward, please do let me know. Um, but otherwise we are on hold with that project, um, until we are able to get folks back together. And let's see, I think that was all I have.
Thank you very much, Julie. Um, we're now on to, uh, Agenda Item 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any trustee comments and requests for information?
Thank you. Long things. I have a couple of issues, not issues, but comments. One is, um, I agree 100% on that, um, diversity, equity, inclusion project, deferring that because in-person meetings are very important for that. We're not deferring the program, we're deferring the, uh, implementation of, of, I mean, the education process that'll help us do a better job of implementing the program. The program itself is happening, okay? The other thing was, um, I don't know whether you've been following village council very much, but, uh, uh, the village council has been, uh, meeting virtually also. And they received a, uh, a, a presentation from the village manager a couple of weeks ago, which was a little scary because it, uh, pointed out since the village runs, it doesn't run on property taxes primarily like we do. It runs on sales taxes and hotel taxes and food and beverage taxes and building permit fees and things like that. And their income has taken a big hit already. And, uh, they are coming up with several contingency plans depending on how bad it gets. Um, just stay tuned with that a little bit. I mean, they're not, they're not panicking yet, but they, they have some contingents, some, uh, some models that show that they could be, uh, losing, uh, you know, 17, 20, 23 million dollars. They have reserves, but those reserves don't last forever. So, um, hopefully the, the virus won't last forever either. And we'll get to back some semblance of normalcy. It affects us only to the extent that we share some of their reserve funds. If you recall, we have an intergovernmental agreement with them that allows us to run for the first six months of the year before our tax revenues come in. We run, you know, what, 97% on property taxes. So, but we don't get the first six months worth of property tax until June. And so we have an intergovernmental agreement where we tap their reserve funds to operate during that time. And they're very much aware of that. And they're not talking about emptying their reserve funds by a long shot. And the part that we would need, a couple of million dollars worth max, um, they'll be able to handle. It's just something that we need to keep in the, somewhere in the back of our minds as things move forward. Other than that, I am just thrilled with the way the staff has been keeping the library open. The building is closed, but the library is open. And I've had a number of people in the community tell me that they are so happy the library is open. I've had people tell me they called up with reference questions, they're checking out eBooks. Uh, there's just all kinds of things going. And they miss the staff because they don't see them. But they are still enjoying the programs.
And I'll tell you, the staff misses the public. They, we are, we're missing our regulars. They're, they're a regular part of our lives.
And I have two two quick questions. One is, I was so impressed on Friday the 13th, which I'll never forget. That's when an email came from the school about 2:30, I think, that there was going to be no more school. And I don't recall what time the library's email came saying, we'll be closing tonight at nine o'clock, but come in and check out and there'll be no return dates for, uh, until a set date of May 1st now. But, um, I was just wondering if you know that many other libraries were able to move that fast too, because it was so impressive that everyone saw that email and was there that evening. And my second question was that I read your, you shared different articles about libraries and I listened to an interview from Bloomington Normal, the library there, that, um, they've extended, I don't even know what our policy is usually, their Wi-Fi used to only be available outside their building in the parking lot for people during their hours that they were open and operating. But now they're doing it 24/7. If someone needs to come use Wi-Fi in the parking lot, I didn't know if that's something that we do or not.
Our Wi-Fi is open and available all the time. And I have to say that it just goes to show how much reach our PR department has for us that so many people knew right away to get to the library on Friday the 13th and to, um, get their books before the library closed. Uh, they did a bang up job, uh, making sure that everybody knew and it was out in all of our social media channels and just every way that they had to get that information out to people as quickly as possible. And, uh, they, they did an amazing job at that.
And yes, our Wi-Fi does reach into the parking lot. Um, I have seen people in the parking lot using it. I see people out in front of the burning using it. I've got a confession to make. In time, uh, our Wi-Fi at the church across the street went out and I used the library's Wi-Fi from there. Briefly.
Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, one is, I hope it really quick. Um, the Park Ridge memo that you shared, Julie, is that a matter of public record? Can that be shared to, with anyone? Or is that, is that a secured document?
Um, that was actually shared with their library board as part of their board packet. So yes, it's a public document.
Perfect. Thank you. It was, I thought, as others mentioned, I thought that was very helpful and, and a useful kind of laying out of the, the impacts of, of furloughing staff and how that could play out more broadly. Um, and my, uh, my other question was around, um, I was curious, because you mentioned earlier, Julia, and, and when we were talking about, um, the phased plan to come, to come back to life, right? Um, the, the The, the rails, the issue with rails and whether, whether and how they come back online? And I was curious how much of our circulation was kind of rails-related? So how, how much of the, how many of the books that come through Downers Grove are actually rails books? That kind of come, that are just kind of moved through the system that way? I, I don't have a good sense of, I mean, is that, is it a really large, is it a high percentage? Is it a low percentage? I was just curious and kind of how that might play out then, when things come back open?
Statistically, over 85%, and I think it's closer to 90, I don't remember the exact percent off the top of my head, of Downers Grove Library patron checkouts are provided by the Downers Grove Library. But we are still moving, we move a lot of books. We, every day, seven, eight bins a day. So it is a significant amount. And that tends to be those items that are not available, that we don't have in our collection. That's the primary thing is, is getting those things that we don't own.
Great. That's really helpful. Thank you. And then I just had two other things that I, I had kind of, you know, heard or read about in the last few weeks coming out of public libraries in different parts of the country, mostly in the Midwest, that I was wondering if, if we were considering or, you know, would consider. One was a really interesting project from the La Crosse Public Library in La Crosse, Wisconsin. And I can share a link. They were actually surveying, they, they put a survey out to the community asking people to reflect on their experiences during COVID-19. So it was really like an archiving the community response project. And it was, it was really interesting, kind of the questions they're asking about both personal and professional lives, how it was impacting their community, what they're worried about. And it was, you know, like journaling slash archiving, right? Kind of a historical memory of this time that we're going through. It's, it's a fascinating project. I thought their questions were really well laid out. And I think there's a few other organizations now doing that. But I thought it was, it was a tremendous idea and something that might be worth exploring. And then the other thing I saw was Skokie Public doing, thinking about what, what impacts the community will see, well, starting now, but then into, certainly into the next several months around job training and employment coaching and things like this. They, they've been doing a lot of like online job fairs, trying to connect employers with people who have been laid off or furloughed. And I thought, you know, that was something that really struck me that they've already kind of put some of that into place. I think they had programs already existing that they then pivoted quickly to then respond to this crisis. So again, like libraries are super innovative and people are great about thinking of all these different solutions. And so I thought I'd just highlight a couple that I'd seen recently that I thought were really great.
Well, thank you, Carissa. And make sure you send me the information from La Crosse because I haven't seen that. The Skokie stuff, I, they are, they do amazing things. And we are very lucky to have a really great partner in People's Resource Center. They do a lot of our job training kinds of things and they are chomping at the bit. They are ready to go on this. And so we will be, we're already looking at, at how do we be set up? How do we get people more training and, and get the, the kind of timely training and, and resources that they need? So, yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
And I neglected one thing in my librarian's report. And that was to bid adieu and a Godspeed to our wonderful Sophia Vaughn, who is our administrative assistant, Caitlin's right hand, the gal who does all of that input on the invoicing and, and with payroll and timesheets and really is Caitlin's right hand. And unfortunately, she will be leaving us to move back to New England to be closer to her dad. And there was a job change for her husband, but she has been an amazing part of our team. She was the one who got us through both of Caitlin's maternity leave because otherwise I don't know how we would have survived. But we're very sad that, that Sophia will be leaving us. Her last day is Monday.
Okay, any additional trustee comments or questions? We will definitely miss Sophia Vaughn for sure. Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for participating virtually. And I will hereby adjourn the meeting.